Regular meeting of. All this regular meeting of the Andover Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission to Order. And alternate as much as checked out. My internet connection is unstable according to a pop up message that I keep getting. So I hope you'll excuse me if I disappear occasionally.
You faded out several times.
I am, I am unmuted.
No, I know you are, and we can hear you, but there are periods where the bandwidth apparently doesn't make your voice come through well.
Oh, I see. Well, I'll try to speak directly to the microphone and you know, as they say, raise your head if you can't hear in the back of the room, wherever that might be on Zoom. Okay, so uh next item on the agenda would be changes in order to the agenda. As far as I'm aware, there is no need to do so. Desire on part of any of the commissioners to change the order or otherwise alter the agenda. Seeing none, we'll proceed to approval of the minutes for our September fourteenth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting. I will move to approve those minutes. And ask for a second. I have a second, second from Judd Larson. I give you a moment to once again review and see if there are anything in your notes. I had one comment. In item nine E, part of the administrative report. It says concrete rubber, and I believe that that should probably be rubble. It's like those auto generated closed captions you get on YouTube videos with interesting renderings. Other than that, I hadn't noticed anything.
I had no comments on the minutes.
Okay. Commissioner Monroe, did you have any?
I was looking at the same thing, that concrete rubber, and I was gonna ask what is, what is concrete?
You would like to know, right? There is such a thing. But I'm reviewing the application, I'm pretty sure it's rubble. Okay, so with no further corrections, so we can, or well, here. Joe, did you have anything you noted?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
I think we might have lost George, so it might be a good idea to try if we all turn our cameras off for a minute to see if that helps with his bandwidth. If he's having a hard time with bandwidth. Uh, it looks like we just lost him in general.
Stop video, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I think we just lost him, so we could just turn our cameras back on, that didn't help. Here he is. You're on mute, George.
We go. Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that. Dodgy wifi connection at my end of the house. So item number five, public comments. I don't see any public except for those with business before the commission, and we'll be addressing that soon. So move to all business, the first item, our application twenty one fifteen for the Bunker Hill Road Bridge.
George, did we approve, did we vote to approve the minutes? If you held a vote, we may have missed you.
Oh, I thought I held a vote, yes, but backing up if you want to reiterate that, I'd be happy to do that. Do by roll call, I guess, Commissioner Monroe.
Hi.
Commissioner Larson.
Hi.
And Chairman Elliott, I, so again, motion carries unanimously. Okay, back to twenty one fifteen Bunker Hill Road Bridge. First of all, Agent Wagner, have been any updates on that? Since our, since we consider our previous meeting.
No, nothing new. I haven't heard anything from Eric or anything else about that other than, yeah, what we talked about a couple weeks ago.
I know there's been work going on down there. I've seen equipment on the, on the bridge, but.
Yeah, as far as I know, they're trying to open, open it up as a one lane bridge. But that's, that's all I've heard.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions or comments on the application?
All set.
Jed also?
Yep, all set.
Okay, then I'll move to approve application number IWWC twenty one dash fifteen for temporary repairs on the Bunker Hill Road Bridge. By roll call, vote, Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
And I, Chairman Elliott, also vote aye, so the motion carries unanimously. Next, we have application twenty one dash nineteen for rebuilding an existing lake wall on two sixty eight Lake Road. Again, Agent Wagner, have we got any updates on that? I did notice that the Alma letter of approval was now on file.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we received that. I tried to talk to Public Works about options for the Culver. I didn't get a response. Okay. So I reviewed, I reviewed the Connecticut Stormwater Manual for retrofit options or anything that that they would suggest. And it really looks like anything other than digging up that pipe, like the whole lawn and redesigning some kind of infiltration basin or, you know, S shaped infiltration channel would be an option, which doesn't seem like a great option in this situation, or some kind of like a deeper catch basin or a like a filtration device inside the storm drain, which would be something that could, you know, unrelated to the wall that could happen at a later time.
Yeah, it seems to me that it would be up, it would really be up to Alma to initiate any action on that, because really the discharge is, is into the lake per se. And that's Alma's responsibility. So, okay, it was, it was just a passing thought anyhow in terms of the permit request itself. And then let me ask the applicants, I see Faziano is on, Faziano is on the call here, if they were able to work with the contractor with respect to this, the drainage discharge from their cellar or basement. That was the other item that we had discussed as a potential mitigation.
So, one option other than running the pipe directly into the lake as it is now would be to discharge the pipe from the basement into a dry well. Or our plans do involve possibly replacing the house entirely in a year or two. And.
Well, I would take care of it.
And that would take care of it. I'm really, if, if, if the pipe into the lake presents an issue for the board in any way, we're certainly open to the subject of, let me, let me throw a bag of cement in that hole. And we'll close for now, and in a year or two, we'll be back with a, with a plan for a new home and moving on. Either way, I'm okay with it.
Any comments from?
What we spoke with the contractor was, was to have the pipe stop before it gets to the lake and go through the filter paper that the wall is gonna be backed with. That's, that's where it is now. So if you want us to get rid of the pipe altogether or whatever, it's, it's fine, but that's the current status, what we're gonna do.
Right, well, the pipe's gonna have to get taken up at least a bit during the process of rebuilding the wall, so maybe that would be an expedient short term solution and given our, your intentions to redo the whole house, then a short term is, is indeed applicable here. So, it, I'll quickly poll the, the members, is there any for thought on, on that possibility, just, again, just discharging essentially into the backing of the wall, which would certainly slow down any discharge and perhaps filter any discharge as opposed to running it directly out to the lake.
Care, Elliot, is that, I, I think it would depend on how much water are you talking about? Is it just a small little bit of water?
Yeah, usually it's just dry. Most of the times, if we get torrential rain, there might be some water coming out of it, but that's about it.
Okay. That seems like a reasonable thing to do then. Otherwise, if there's, I would say, if there's too much water coming out of that, that could actually be maybe not the best thing to do. Cause then it could back up.
Yeah, like mostly it's dry.
Mostly dry and just a trickle?
Yeah.
I don't know that it even runs at, at a trickle ever, even if.
Well, this summer would be a good test.
So, just so I'm clear, the applicants, you were saying that you were gonna run the pipe so that it went, you know, through the, the stone that you put before you get to the stone wall that your back fill stone that you were gonna put in there? Or it was gonna continue to run into the lake? I wasn't clear on, on what option of the two that you were taking there.
So I, I believe what we discussed with the contractor was the pipe would discharge from the house underground to approximately where the filter paper begins, cause then you have the filter paper, that foot of crushed stone, then the actual stone wall.
Okay, no, I got it. That sounds good. Thank you.
In a sense, that, that backfill behind the wall per se would be acting like a dry well.
Yes.
Joe, do you have any comments on that?
Um, no, I drafted a since it's not on the plan as that, I drafted a condition, if you wanted it to terminate that drain pipe in that crushed stone section.
Okay.
Add to the permit, if you'd like.
Okay, good, yeah, we would, we would certainly want to add that to the permit conditions as a condition of approval. Agreed that that would be the best short term solution, as opposed to discharging into the lake. Okay, any further comments?
I did have one other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is, I know at, at the last meeting, the applicants mentioned that they would like to use an excavator, or the contractor would like to use an excavator down there at the lake. And it wasn't clear to me, as I looked at the house, how you would get the, the contractor's excavator down to the shoreline. It, it doesn't look like there's a, a good spot for you to get through there on either side of the house.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough property, but I spoke with the neighbor, Pat Cappanbin. On, I think he's two seventy two Lake Road, and he would allow our guy to drive from this, from the road through, there's a gap in the bushes. The guy that does our lawns comes through there and does both our lawns.
Okay, I got you. Yep, and I just, looking at your particular house there, I didn't see.
How would you get it, how would you get it in there? You have to fly it in.
Barge.
Right.
Okay, any, if there are no further comments, I will move to approve the permit application with the additional condition of the modification of the cellar discharge pipe as discussed and is included in Agent Wagner's comment.
I'll second.
Okay. Then by roll call, Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so the motion carries unanimously. So, Agent Wagner will of course issue the permit, there's a two week cooling off period here. And anyhow, it looks like it's gonna be a while before they're gonna be able to lower the lake.
Yeah.
With the amount of water that's coming in, so hopefully there will be no further ado and you will be able to proceed with the project. And again, we'll look forward to seeing you in a few years when you're ready to find a new way to get to exist on a small property with a lakefront.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, then, moving on. Item number seven on the agenda, enforcement actions. It appears we have a problem at ninety three Townsend Road. The application that we approved was back in twenty nineteen for a driveway crossing a wetlands. And yes, I had also noticed those storage containers, I think they were brought up relatively shortly after the permit was issued. And they seem to be staying, as well as what looks like a wood burning furnace. So, Agent Wagner.
Yeah, I just I took a couple pictures, I visited the place. I had called the applicant, the, the permit. When did I call him? It was in June, maybe the end of June, asking him about those containers and he had told me that he would get them moved. They were, they contained the stuff that he was gonna, you know, all his items that he was gonna move into the house after they were finished building it. And he got a certificate of occupancy. So he said it would be about a month and they haven't been moved yet, so I wrote a letter on September twenty seventh, so last week, I mailed it out. Just telling him his options, see, to move the container or apply for a permit, which but, you know, moving the containers would be preferable. He told me he wants to move them. I don't know if he needs the equipment like a crane or a flatbed truck or something to haul them out, but I figured I'd since I sent them the letter late last week, I'd give them a few days and then probably give them a call later this week. Before we, before he had to take any formal action. So I just wanted to keep the commission updated on what was going on over there, since they're pretty visible. Like you said, you noticed them.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of a cool line to putting a shed in the upper room or your, or something like that, but yeah, we, we should keep an eye on that and you know, give him a reasonable amount of time to get them moved, but it does appear that the, the place is now occupied. And so there's no reason for those to be on site any longer. Okay, any questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, seeing that, we'll move to item number eight. As I indicated in the email that I sent to commissioners and to our agent Wagner, I received the usual request from the town clerk to provide our meeting schedule for two thousand twenty two. And I checked the calendar and based on our, our practice, that is the first Monday of the month, except on, except when the first Monday is either a holiday or follows a holiday weekend. January eleventh, February seventh, March seventh, April fourth, May second, June sixth, July twelfth, August first, September thirteenth, October third, November seventh, and December fifth. I heard from Commissioner Larson, I think Agent Wagner and Clerk Winter that that would be acceptable schedule. Mr. Commissioner Monroe, did you have any reservations or?
I missed, what was January's meeting day?
January would be on the eleventh, since the first Monday follows a holiday weekend. So it's the second Tuesday.
Okay, no, that's, they look great.
Okay, then, if there are no objections, I'll simply move to approved by unanimous consent. So again, no objections. The motion passes. Okay. Agent report, it looks like you had one permit that was approved.
Yeah, it was eighty five Bear Swamp Road, it was a fourteen by thirty prefabricated shed on a gravel base. It's within the hundred foot upland review area of brook and a little pond, but it's in the it was in a cleared, you know, on a, on a grass lawn, relatively flat area. Well, the permit is on posted online, there was kind of a a basic plan, but there was no clearing involved in, in placing the shed or anything, it's just it's just going on the guy's lawn. I also have something I received regarding IWWC twenty dash thirty six, the twenty six Old Farms Road permit that was approved earlier this year for the wetlands crossing. They had sent me a plan, Abby's sharing it on the screen, for a new new culvert plan, so apparently the the price of the box culvert that was in the plan has increased substantially since this permit was approved, so they decided to go with a open box poured in place culvert, so it's the same dimensions, but there won't be a bottom, so you just have, would have to excavate for the footing. And then they put forms up and then pour the concrete top and sides in place, and there will be, like I said, there'll be no bottom, so the stream will, will be less disturbed from that, and it'll maintain the same dimensions.
Right, they were gonna backfill the base of the culvert anyhow, right there.
Yeah.
Plan call for, so structurally, it'll do do the same thing, I mean, they'll ruin a string bed.
Yeah. So it'll be, instead of having to excavate the entire thing, you know, the stream channel to put the culvert in, and then re rebuild the stream channel inside the concrete culvert, they'll, they'll just be able to do the footings alongside of it. Which is probably, which is a better, from a wetlands perspective, it's a better option anyway, having an open bottom culvert is always the recommended practice as opposed to a box culvert. But they wanted me to, to share that with the commission, and they said they'd be willing to to talk, speak about it if need be. And then the zoning agent said he would he's going to send that to the town engineer for review, just to make sure structurally it's sound, but.
Yeah, I think pending, pending that determination, we probably should consider this, it's a, it is a permit modification. And we should bring it up at, at the next opportunity, we could probably put it on the agenda for our November meeting.
See, I was thinking it was pretty, it was pretty minor modification being that the, the dimension, I mean, it's just like a construction method instead of you know, they're not changing the, the size of the culvert or anything. Um, all those calculations and everything would be the same.
Right, yeah, I, I, I think it's a, a minor change as well. But again, just to make sure we have all of our Ts dotted and our Is crossed, we should probably, again, review this in some detail, and especially again, getting the, making sure that it's a structurally sound solution. And, you know, again, I certainly understand the intent, and I don't have any objection to it, but as you said, I think that doesn't, just as a matter of form, we should at least consider it at, at a meeting where we can have it on the agenda.
So what would you, what would you suggest, a permit modify, like an application? For a permit modification?
Off, off the top of my head, I think I, I would, I'd wanna review just how I would wanna approach it. But as I said, we, we certainly can't approve it at this point. And because it's in, it's directly in a wetlands, this doesn't seem like something that you could approve you know, on your own recognizance, so as you say, I think we just better make sure that we take a look at it a subsequent meeting.
Well, we need to, I mean, we need to have a, like a procedure for that, I mean.
Right, I've gotta, you know, I, I, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head what that would be, so I'd like a little space to get back to you on that question. But it seems to me it would be something of a permit modification. So that again, I said, as I said, I just wanna make sure we have a chance to consider it as an item on our agenda rather than simply responding to it as a communication.
Yeah, I'll just have to, we'll have to come up with what what it would be on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Between between here and the next, so I can get the, you know, if you're if you require an application, I'll have to get the applicant enough notice to put something together.
Jared, did you have a comment there?
Yes, and I guess I remember as we were going through the approval process for that filling of the wetlands, you know, the discussions were all about one size of a culvert. And then, you know, we found out that that wasn't the right size. They were putting a smaller one in. And we talked about having, you know, a bigger span, which was cost prohibitive. It's disappointing to me to hear at this point that there was a cheaper alternative that we wouldn't have considered, that we didn't consider. And it might have allowed us to have the greater span that we were looking in from the the start as opposed to putting the two different culverts through there. So there's probably, I agree that what they're looking to do now is probably better than what we ultimately approved. It's just very disappointing that when we were trying to drive so hard on what's preventing us from doing it right, which was building the bigger spans. We got all this stuff about the cost being prohibitive. And here we find out there's a cheaper option that we never considered as an alternative. That's just very disappointing to me.
From from my conversations with the applicant, they're saying that the costs of the prefabricated culvert went up substantially between now and then. I I'm not sure, but so so this is still more like a more expensive option than anything that was considered. Because I remember them considering the style during the approval process and they're talking about how expensive it it was compared to the other one. I forget the exact number, but so I think everything's, everything's at a higher cost now and just shifted upwards. So it made this more more reasonable. And, you know, I'm not sure, I didn't see any numbers, but that's what the applicant said. But I can have I can have them come in and speak about it in the next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, I, the engineers certainly didn't make us aware of any option other than a prefabricated box culvert. And I wasn't aware that the the same thing could be achieved on site essentially with, you know, constructed forms. So I I think it's worth discussion and I think that the point about, you know, the 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 cost is relevant. But, you know, again, as Agent Wagner pointed out, it may still be more expensive even with the less expensive option than we, than than the applicants anticipated. And again, the the engineers did assure us that the capacity of the culverts was more than adequate for anticipated stream flows even under high water conditions. So I I don't think that the issue of of a larger culvert is necessarily relevant. But again, I think we should hear from the applicants, from the permitees about this modification and what's driving that request. So I Joe, I can be in contact with you as soon as I've had a chance to review the legs and and see what would be the most appropriate way of dealing with this kind of modification.
Okay.
Okay. So anything else from the agent report?
No, that was it.
Okay. Other business, does anyone have comments? Questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Agent Wagner. During that summer storm, I live on Rose Lane in town here. We ended up with a sinkhole at the end of Rose Lane. And I don't know if the town's aware of it or not.
I'm not sure I can I can forward the message. Send it over to Public Works and the town administrator for you.
Yeah, I I thought he was gonna be on tonight. That's why I kind of waited. Not here, so. Yeah, I appreciate it because I don't, you know, it's it's not too bad right now, but it's right on the very edge of the paved. So if if it expands at all, it could just, you know, undermine that whole cul-de-sac.
Okay. I'll let him, I'll let him know.
Let's see now. I had one comment, I re-talked last meeting about revising the regulations. And I did submit our regulations and proposal revisions to the email box at D E P. And predictably, I haven't received any response to that. We'll hold on that then until if I don't hear from them soon, I will send a second inquiry or see if there's some way to contact an actual person regarding those revisions. One thing that did occur to me was looking at the, you know, the new E electronic permit application. Since we're doing everything electronically now, I was wondering about our requirement for eight copies. You know, it says in the regulations and it says on the website that applications have to be covered by eight copies. And the copying fees would be included if there were more required. And since electronic forms are indefinitely replicable, virtually no cost, we might want to amend that regulation at least as long as we're going to be working with electronic submissions. I don't see any prospect of going back to paper applications in the near future.
Yeah, we haven't haven't gone live with the virtual applications yet.
Right.
I've been kind of holding off till we get a new building admin assistant before we, you know, get them up to speed and then, because they're still trying to get used to the doing the building permits online. So I figured we, because we don't get that many wetlands applications, so we could handle it by hand. And then as for the eight applications, I haven't been requiring that.
Okay.
Most of them is kind of a waste. They just fill up the file cabinet and no one needs them. So I mean, they're they're, we can make copies if if necessary.
Right. Okay, again, I was just passing thought and I did, I realized that we weren't really distributing paper copies anymore anyhow, so seemed like a moot point. All right. Any, I don't believe there's any other business. Okay, then our next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, November the first, again, at 7:00 PM on Zoom. And with that, I will move to adjourn and seeing no objection declared by unanimous consent. So I like these short and sweet meetings. But of course, we can look forward to more business in the future. So with that, I think we can all click the little little red leave button on the lower right hand corner of our screen and say, good night and see you in a week.
Hey, everybody.
Good night, everyone.